Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rissman?
President, I have not received any correspondence.
And Emily Rissman will be joining us via telephone or video conferencing due to her military duty. Councilmember Mackin?
Present.
And Emily Rissman will be joining us via telephone. It is delayed.
It's a delay.
You're gonna have to take us up to you. Councilmember Johnson is absent. Councilmember Knock?
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Present.
Councilmember Petsko?
Here.
Councilmember Hazel Baker is absent. Councilmember Houts?
Here.
And Mayor Kramer.
I'm here. I did hear from Councilman Johnson and I'm sure Councilman Hazel Baker is the reason. So we'd look for a motion to excuse those two.
Motion.
Thanks, Jim.
Support.
Or Mike. We have a motion and support to excuse Councilman Hazel Baker and Johnson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. We have a spot on our agenda now for public comments. And we'd like to address the council. They may do so now or at the end of the meeting. Seeing none, we'll move to our consent agenda. These are items we consider to be routine. We'll take them in one motion unless someone up here or someone in the audience wishes it removed. Tonight, we have our regular minutes of September 13th. Public Library Advisory Board minutes of August 9th. Historic District minutes of May 17th. And a memo from me regarding some board appointments. Those are the items in our consent agenda. Does anybody in the audience want anything removed? Anybody at council level? Seeing none, we'd look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thanks, John.
Support.
Travis? We have motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Now, bills and accounts, we're being asked to approve $185,811. Questions? Comments? Motion?
Motion to pay the bills.
Thanks, Travis.
Support.
Thanks, Scott, I think. We have motion and support to pay our bills. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. We're up to number six. City manager report Keith.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, councilmembers and everyone else. Just to let you know, we are working on the technological issues and trying to remove the delay or the reverberation you might be hearing. First and foremost, just to bring your attention again to the upcoming November election, that being scheduled for Tuesday, November 2nd. Absentee voter applications have been sent, I believe, so...
We've sent out about 1,020 ballots.
Secondly, some fall reminders. Final brush pickup will begin next week, Monday, October 4th. As we do in the fall, we will continue to pick up yard waste bags as weather permits each Monday until the snow flies. And we, as though thankfully trees aren't turning quite yet, but when they start to, and we start to accumulate leaves, we just ask that residents not rake or dump leaves into the streets until we've published a pickup schedule and have begun the leaf pickup in earnest later in October or early November. Just a reminder too, that the burning of yard waste, brush, or leaves is not permitted in the city limits. There again, brush, leaves, and yard waste can continue to be dropped off at the city's municipal services facility on 45 Industrial Drive during our normal weekly business hours and then on Saturday mornings as well. And then lastly, with the good weather, it looks like we'll have this week and hopefully continuing into the fall, we still seek, or ask you to keep your lawns mowed, keep your yards free from junk, and vehicles appropriately parked. Chief Schmaltz can maybe make reference to this a little bit in his presentation too, but October is National Fire Prevention Month, so during the course of the month, and specifically October 3rd through 9th next week, being Fire Prevention Week. And the Co-Water Fire Department will have a number of activities going on, tours and demonstrations. And we also, it's a good time to remind you that this is a good time to replace batteries and smoke detectors and check your home's heating system. Inevitably, we always have a fire or two that can be, as a result of the heating season starting up. Just a recognition that we want to make to the fall decorations downtown. Those are sponsored by the Co-Water Downtown Development Authority. They got installed just before Apple Fest and they're designed and maintained by Nightser Screenhouse. So we appreciate the DDA for sponsoring those and we appreciate Kent Nightser and his crew for the design and setup of those. Hoptoberfest, about a week, two weeks away, Saturday, October 9th. Our second annual food, music, and entertainment will take place on South Monroe Street. There again, recreating Hobson Monroe for Saturday night, October 9th. And the event runs from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. One more fall-related event is Haunted Forest, and that's being held on Friday, October 15th and Saturday, October 16th. That's a $5 per person and there's a less scary time.
Can you unmute yourself, Emily?
I can hear you.
All right, we can hear you too now.
Is it that going back and back now still? Yeah, okay.
On my end.
Sorry, Emily, I was just asking if you'd be interested in making that motion since...
She can't hear us.
She did say?
Are you saying you cannot hear us, Emily?
No, I can hear you, but the echo stopped.
Echo's back.
Echo's...
Okay, we got echo when you're unmuted. And that piece of land is obviously city-owned, how we're able to grant them easement, correct?
Correct.
So, this is gonna be an open ditch?
Yes, this portion of it, yep.
Unless there would be development there, they want a driveway or parking, correct? Then it could be...
Yeah, drives can go in. It requires a permit, but yeah, that can go in.
And what's the crossing on the north? So there's a crossing in there?
Yeah, there's an existing crossing about two-thirds of the way down from the north property line.
Any other questions for Randy or Mike?
Yeah, there's an existing crossing about two-thirds.
So if we're so inclined, our action would be to make a motion to enter into, introduce agreement A 2122 for this one.
Motion.
Thanks, Jim.
Or...
John? Any final questions? This is a roll call vote, so the clerk's ready.
Councilmember Knock?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
Councilmember Petsko?
Yes.
Councilmember Houts?
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman?
Um, I wasn't able to hear any of the conversation, so I honestly don't know what we're voting on.
Okay, she's not able to hear any of the correspondence.
She's not sure what we're voting on.
Right, she was... She can hear us now, but not.
It's item number 11A, the drain easement.
She can hear us now, but not.
City-owned land, Emily, we're granting a 50-foot easement for a drain.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mackin?
And Mayor Kramer?
Yes, motion carried. B is easement agreement A 2123.
We don't technically own that. That is a DNR.
So now we move over to Race Street.
We can't sell it when we get rid of it. I have to give it back to the DNR. I've been holding on to it. It was our grass, our grass rig. So it's basically sitting out in the parking lot. We'll use that every now and then when we need to transport some pieces of equipment, but I've kind of been holding on until I heard back from the DNR if they have another truck that we could actually rotate and replace. If by chance BPU comes up with another replacement truck that they're looking to get rid of, that would slide in and I'd give that truck back to the, back to the DNR. Engine 4 is gonna be our next, um, older, older truck. And we got that in 1993, but that's the township-owned truck. So we don't have necessarily NSA on when that, when that gets replaced. But I'm anticipating that in the upcoming negotiations with the townships, that's gonna be near the top of the list, simply because of what it's showing in the NFPA documents with it being, you know, pushing 28 years, 29 years old as a vehicle. It's still a very good running vehicle. It's just, it's getting to the end of its, end of its life. So that brings me to the vehicle that I really want to highlight tonight, which would be the one I'd be looking to replace, which is what we call our Rescue 1. That's a 1997 rescue engine pumper and that's, that's reserved right now. All right, Sue? So, some of the things with Rescue 1, which you'll see, we'll see right here from the picture, it doesn't, it doesn't look too bad. And I would say cosmetically on the outside, it really is. We've done a heck of a good job for close to a 27, 28-year-old piece of apparatus. But it's the problems that you don't see that we need to address. So, the first one's going to be is that the manufacturer of this vehicle, American La France, has declared bankruptcy numerous times throughout its history, and then it actually went out of business in 2014. So I've seen over my career, just in the last 15 years, people started to dump, get rid of their American La Frances because this was coming and they kind of saw it. So now we're, we have a vehicle that we struggle to get parts with. They're just not manufactured. It's hard to get service on them for that. So, this is, this is an outstanding example. So on our, on our pump, we have what's called a relief valve. So when the pressure gets real high, it doesn't cavitate the pump, blow it up. It actually pushes the pressure out. We've had multiple mechanics look at the pump relief valve with no luck of being able to, to repair it. So we've had to train ourselves to be very cautious, to listen to how pressures are going up and down, to make sure that we don't have a, have a problem. Thank goodness it's still on reserve. This is the one, I have to say, scares me the most. So we've had it where, around the, in this exact same picture here, if you look, and if you look at the rear wheel there, you'll see the wheel chalk. And that's to keep the vehicle from, from rolling downhill or rolling away. So every Monday, if you're driving by the station, you'll see our vehicles out in front. We're doing testing and things like that. Well, we test the pump. We don't run the RPMs up too high. And then the last year, we've had it where it'll slip out of pump gear and go back into road gear and the truck wants to go forward. So what scares me about that is not only that somebody could get hurt, but if I'm actually operating in a scene and I got those RPMs just rocking and rolling, it's gonna jump that wheel chalk and it's gonna head down the street. And with catastrophic, you know, we could hit something, lines are gonna be pulled. I mean, it's just, it could be really, really bad for us. So that, that's one of those ones that really bothers me, okay? And then I have a truck that's been sitting basically for the last two years and we spent about $10,000 just on repairs. And there's a couple that I still have that I should take care of, but I'll be honest, I've, I've put it off because I just didn't want to spend the money on, on it. So, then that takes me up to here, our Engine 7. Now, if we do get authorization to start to move forward, Rescue 1 would go away. We'd, we'd sell it or dispose of it, whichever we choose. And Engine 7 here, which has been our workhorse for the last 11 years, coming out of, out of the front, this runs our fires, medicals, all of it. It was purchased in 2010. It's been a great truck, but like, like anything, we're seeing, we're seeing, we're seeing the wear and, the wear and tear on it. So, um, in the last two years, I've, and when I say years for this, I'm talking the budget fiscal year, not calendar year. I've spent close to 22, well, we've spent close to $22,000 in repairs. Right now, it is actually in the garage up in Jackson, getting some more repairs done on it. I hate to say it's actually some of the air conditioning stuff that's getting taken care of, but also the radiator. We've had radiator issues with that, that particular apparatus as well. The part that I made a mistake on in the letter that I sent to Keith was actually the cost of what the radiator would be. I spoke with the manufacturer and it sounds more now that the radiator itself could run in the neighborhood of about $6,000 and then to install it, another $4,000. And then I know, when I've kind of been looking at this, we're gonna need some new, new front-end suspension, shocks, springs and things, which will be in the neighborhood again of another five to six. So, we're just, this, this truck is running near the end of its frontline, frontline service. Now, if you think back to the NFPA document where it talks about 15 years and then you move it into reserve, we're a little short on that, but what I'm looking for, okay, Sue? What I'm looking for then is to start the process of developing our specifications list and then going out to bid. It's about a year early, technically, from what the replacement schedule is. We're not supposed to start really doing this until next fiscal year, but with the way things have been, been rolling out with the supply of, of materials, the back order, all of that stuff, I'm now being told from manufacturers that once the order is placed, it could be anywhere from a year to 18 months before you take delivery of the, of the vehicle. So I come before you this evening to ask to start the process eight, nine months, a little, you know, eight to nine months, a little bit earlier, put the specifications list together, go out to bid, and then bring it back to, to this body sometime after the first of the year to get approval, to then accept one of those bids and potentially move on to placing our order and then hopefully take delivery of the new vehicle somewhere in the neighborhood of late '22, early '23. So with that, I will entertain any questions.
Maybe Dave, a couple of things, maybe just to make reference, just to wrap up your, your kind of overview of the, of the department and the apparatus of, of the other pieces that we have, but also just to, when working with Tom and Jeff previously, they've, we've set aside funds for the future purchase of a, of a fire truck. So there has been an anticipated replacement schedule. There are funds that are part of our assigned reserves and the fund balance that, that, that was contemplated. This in and of itself makes no obligation to purchase a vehicle. So this is really getting the idea in front of you, then bringing it, and if you have acceptance of the idea, then, then going forward and putting those specs together and bringing back what that would look like ultimately prior to awarding a bid. And then I've also challenged Dave that if there's any way in which we could consolidate apparatus or go more multipurpose, you know, and looking at the other apparatus that we have and what we're gonna anticipate replacing to, to any future purchase, having some, having that considered as part of the design.
Is that possible? Feasible, realistic?
Well, looking at, right, looking at, um, the size of tanks and, you know, to what, it all goes to the purpose of what, I'll speak for you, but we've had this discussion, but you know, to what purpose then are you putting that, that vehicle to use, so?
Dave, can you talk a little more about, I understand the miles concept, that the miles don't really apply, but hours, I mean, how do these? There are larger departments, but they probably have more vehicles that, these trucks are out, I don't want to say daily, but more often. So how are hours compared to a 10-year-old, 11-year-old vehicle? Are hours low for the vehicle? Are hours high? And why are our hours be high with, you know, if it's a good job the building department and you guys do on fire prevention? So is there a lot, big hours? Are the hours large or not? You know what I mean?
So I think if I understand your question, it seems like it's a little multi-folded here. So like, take a big department like, so FDNY, they, they are replacing, there is no, they're replacing their vehicles like every 10 years.
Right.
I mean, so, but that's not all their vehicles. So every year, they're replacing, you know, 10, 15 engines. So that's, that's, that's your constant, your constant role. So their hours are gonna be large, but their miles could be a little bit up too. So like with our Engine 4, so that's a, we're pushing a 20, oh, let me back up, Rescue 1, the one we want to replace. That's a, it's a 1997 vehicle and I want to say off the top of my head, we only have about 55,000 miles on that truck. And you figure from '97 up to '10, that was the frontline vehicle rolling out. So there's, there's not a lot, and Your Honor, I wish I could tell you exactly how many hours are, are on that, but it's gonna be significant. We try to be very, very aggressive on our maintenance program. So I bring in an outside company right now. They do an annual service on, on all the trucks, even, even the reserve stuff. And then I hit the frontline one every six months just to try to keep that, that up and going. Now, you could, somebody could make the argument that, you know, what about a department that does less than 100 calls a year? Yeah, you could probably, you could probably stretch it out. I would even make the argument like with, with, let's say, our ladder truck. I would, I don't, hopefully I'm not still here. But I would say you're gonna get 30 to 35 years out of, out of that vehicle. We're just, we just don't run it enough. So you're not gonna get the hours on that, on that either. So I would think would be to stretch the ladder truck out a little bit farther than that 25.
And what's your process for looking at consolidating, you know, two vehicles into one? Is that something that's potentially you can look at? Is that realistic?
Well, I think what we're, what we've been kind of tossing around the idea of is with the township tanker. You know, can we, can we basically carry the same amount of water on the township tanker on an engine that I would spec right now? With anything, there's gonna be a little bit of give and take. I need to talk with the manufacturer. They can do a lot of neat things now with Poly and really manipulate how the tank conforms inside. So I don't want to say that that's absolutely the way we'd go, but I think it behooves us to turn that stone over and absolutely look at, you know, can, can we do that? I have to pay attention a little bit to some of that ISO stuff that we've talked about in the past because they require that I have three engines and we have a reserve engine to maintain our level, right? So with our Automatic Eight with Quincy, I can use some of their stuff. And I know there's been some discussions about maybe putting, them putting some staff full-time on over there. So that also would, would help us. So it's a little dynamic, but, you know, Mr. Mayor, I think it's, it definitely deserves the discussion. Can we get there? I think it's possible. But I definitely would want to have more, more talks with, with some of my staff and the guys that actually are, you know, were rolling out with this.
Okay. Questions for David?
How much money do you have in your budget right now for it?
I have zero.
Did you say something was budgeted already?
I'd be, I'd be some of.
Facetious, I, in my budget, I don't, I don't know what, what Keith and Tom have set aside.
Right, we've, we've essentially assigned, I believe it's 650 or 700,000 of our existing fund balance towards the future purchase of a, of a fire truck.
And then what's a ballpark on these 1.1 point what million?
Just for an engine? No, we're looking probably at about 650.
So you're saying you already basically have the money?
Right.
Explain that.
Correct, right, we've, we've assigned of our, of our fund balance, as of, as of the last fiscal year, at 5 million, we've said we're saving 650 or 700,000 for that purpose.
You find the we, you and Tom?
Well, internally, yeah.
No, I was trying to be clear, I mean, we, we had that session about using some fund balance down, was that part of the group? Allocation of the extra fund balance, or that's internally what you guys are looking at?
So it's separate from.
Okay.
So if you think about the, the special projects that we talked about, and then add down the, the truck seat, uh.
That's your equipment replacement fund, separate from what we've done.
Okay.
Right.
So this is already basically in the budget. It's there, it's there, it's not going to affect anything else.
There again, you could use it for whatever purpose. We've, we've essentially allocated or, or.
New.
Aside for that purpose, but it doesn't restrict you from, if something were to happen and you wanted to use it for a different purpose, it doesn't prevent you from using it for a different purpose.
Sattler's not here anymore, so.
I'm, I guess, I just want to make sure, so obviously Dave, good presentation, very, very good, but this is coming, your recommendation really has got to go to Keith. And then Keith, do we replace this two or three years earlier? Is that, is this recommendation coming from you via Dave, and you've vetted it and represented us? Because it's really your job to decide what we are asked to spend this kind of money on. So, I mean, is it flowing this way?
Yes, I would say that from what I, in observing and experiencing what we're incurring with that one particular vehicle, yes. It's, it's, uh.
Okay.
It's sad to think that I was actually here when that one was delivered and now I'm thinking about replacing it, but, um, but yes, I would agree with Chief Schmaltz that, and because there's, there again, this is upwards of a two-year process, so. We're going to come back to you in six months with a recommendation, presumably to either purchase or not purchase or order a vehicle. And then there again, it's going to take a year or a year and a half.
But again, you will, they'll come back in six months, but you will then administratively, as our city manager, recommend whether we delay that six months based on our financial situation, or we go ahead then, maybe, I mean, you'll.
Definitely, yes, right.
I, I don't.
At this point, we're not committing any funding to it, other than, other than the effort which to prepare the bids and, and seek.
Okay. Other questions for David or Keith? Uh, I guess all we're asking or giving permission to with this resolution is to begin the process, is that our understanding? If you're so inclined, we'd look for a motion then to adopt, or I guess not adopt, resolution number 2182.
We'll make the motion.
Thanks, Jim.
Support.
Michael? Here we have motion and support. Final questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
Uh, any public comments? Jeff, you want to say anything? You're almost public, no? Okay. Any unfinished business at our level? Do we have any new business at council level, Jimmy?
I, I'd just like to ask, I was going to answer in the city manager report, but on 17 Thompson, then we kind of went into the HVAC bit on it for the Mista house on 17 Thompson. I'm just a little curious, can we get like a timeframe? I can't remember even how long that's been there, has it been there a year, set over a year? Am I, or has it been about?
It's just a spring, it was set, there was.
Okay, yeah, that's true.
I think the basement went in by the snowfall, but the, the house itself was delivered early this spring.
Early in the spring.
But the, to your point, the basement was completed last fall.
Right.
Because then we had snowfall and, um, yeah, we're.
Everything else.
We're struggling with, with, as any other builder or developer, struggling with, um.
Contractor and equipment.
Yes.
So it's just kind of the, did we just, how long ago did we put the bid out for the HVAC?
We've gone back and, well, it's been numerous rounds, I'll save it on, Bob and Chad have, have worked with different contractors to try to get some kind of commitment to do it, yeah, or a number in which, from somebody that had the time available to get it in. So Mista's pushing us to, um, the, the cost itself could conceivably be covered by the sale of the home eventually. But yes, it's, we all know that's, it's getting long in the tooth as far as, um, it's sitting there and, um.
I just want to make sure, we're going to hit our 24-month requirement.
Yeah, that's true.
But I know, I know we still need.
We're, we're pushing 12, yeah, we're, we're on 12 now.
I haven't been in there, but, so we need siding, obviously tie up the outside and the HVAC, and then.
So it's really, so it's the garage. Um, the, the driveway should be going in soon, like the, the remaining concrete work should be completed, and then it's, um, and then it's just the, the HVAC and, and some minor things from there, but really the, the house has been. Uh, our own DMS crews have, have worked on the interior, um, things that they can complete, um, prior to the completion of the garage, but, um, right, it's really the garage and the, and the, uh, the electric service to it and, um, the HVAC.
Can I put you on the spot, one other thing?
Okay.
Hey, tell us about the Rotary Park dock that was taken out, why?
Oh, well, the dock that was removed, well, it was failing, so the, its condition was, was based on it being removed. And we've also, initially, we've looked at that as a possible location for the, 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 um, forthcoming kayak launch, kayak and canoe launch. So that would be a, that wouldn't, that hasn't been finalized yet, but, but the, just the sheer condition of what was there previously was, was in poor condition, so we removed it.
Becoming unsafe for the public to be on.
Very much, so, so whether it's, whether it's for the canoe or kayak or some other purpose, we can install another one, but that one in particular was.
Was that dumped, was that paid for by us, or was that a Rotary donation, you know?
It was just a few sections of, I have, I didn't look into its history.
Right, yeah, I didn't know where it came from, thank you.
Any other new business at our level? Ain't none. We're adjourned.